We ask you, Lord, to grant wisdom and knowledge to this governing body. May they always see you, Lord of the gospel. As we gather this evening during the season of Easter, may we remember that the Lord who suffered, died, rose from the dead, and ascended into heaven for our salvation will return as judge at a time we least expect. May we always be prepared and ready to greet Him when He comes. Until that day, Lord, lead us, guide us, help us to always do your will. In your most holy name, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing as High Springs Troop 69 will present our colors.
Color guard attention, color guard forward march. Color guard halt. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard reform, color guard retreat.
Relax a minute, guys. Y'all just stand at attention. I would like to introduce our Boy Scouts tonight because this is the last three we have in our troop that's been around here for several years. Our patrol leader is Sam Nichol. His brother Zach Nichol and our last remaining Eagle Scout, which is already done, they've all completed all their Eagle projects. Reed is the last one to get accepted, which we have no issue with that. Reed Morris. This is the last three of our Eagle Scouts that we're going to be having in the city of High Springs because Boy Scouts is kind of dwindling away. But I wanted to recognize the last three here tonight, and I would like to have Zach go back out, relax the flags, and then come back in, please. Y'all can be seated now, thank you. Sam, you can take the flag if you want to. So tonight Zach has just completed, and we had an Eagle ceremony for him last Saturday night. So here in High Springs, we'd like to recognize him here since I'm sitting up here also, so I get to do a little bit of bragging on him.
That's right.
So here's proclamation of City of High Springs. Whereas the mission of the Boy Scouts of America is to prepare young men to make ethical and moral choices over their lifetimes by instilling in them the values of the scout oath and law. And whereas the designation of Eagle Scout is the highest achievement in the Boy Scouting Program with only 4% of Boy Scouts earning the distinguished rank. And if you can look up here on the screen, he's working on it, you can see Zach's achievements. That's what Zach has completed and what he's been involved in. And you can see on his sash all his badges. And whereas Zach Nichol, a member of High Springs Boy Scout Troop 69, has completed the requirements and was examined by the Eagle Scout Border Review, which found him worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout on March 4th, 2025. And whereas Zach's Eagle Scout project was to build benches to be used in the outdoor agri-science classroom at A. Alma Bayne Middle School in Alachua. And whereas Zach serves as an example to the youth of our community through his high level of personal achievements, natural leadership skills, and community service, and has made the city of High Springs very proud. Now therefore, Mayor Trister Grunder, Mayor of the City of High Springs, Florida, do hereby recognize and congratulate Zach Nichol for his outstanding accomplishment and extend to him our deepest appreciation for all his dedicated work and wish him the best in future endeavors. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and call to affix the official seal of the City of High Springs, Florida, this 22nd day of May, 2025. Congratulations, Zach.
Zach, that is fantastic, thank you. Thank you for representing High Springs in such a good way. Okay, we will move on to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented with Zachary Nichol's presentation already being completed.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Approval of the consent agenda minutes of the May 8th, 2025 commission meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda for the budget meeting and commission meeting on May 8th, 2025.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We'll move on to special presentations. An introduction by State Attorney, Mr. Brian Kramer.
Cards I'd like to give each of you. And I counted nine of you, and that's nine of them. Well, good evening, you all, and thank you very much for having me. And I'm going to apologize immediately to Mayor Grunder and Commissioner Howell because I'm going to bore them with, they already know me and know me well. So I appreciate your indulgence. I'm Brian Kramer, I'm your state attorney. For those of you who don't know me, I've been your state attorney since 2020. I was elected in 2020, and so I'm in my second term. I have been a prosecutor in our community for about 27 years, and I've been a member of the Florida Bar for the past 31 years and working for this office since 1999. So I wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself to you, and what I've given you is my business card that I've had prepared especially for this purpose. That card has pretty much every possible way there is for you to contact me, with the exception of my, I still actually have a house phone, and it's not on there because it's, I didn't think to put it on there. But that has my personal cellphone number, it has my secretary's number, it has her name, it has my office number, it has my email. It has every possible way there is for you to reach out and contact me. So I also wanted to take an opportunity, of course, two of you already know her, to introduce you all to Rebecca Shinholzer. She has been a member of my office for at least the last 15 years. 20 years. Part of her job is to correct me. And she was our juvenile division chief for many years. And recently, starting this year, I appointed her as the executive director of the office, so she's also a person that you can contact if you need help with our office. What I wanted to do was after this election, we kind of took a step back and started thinking about and reflecting on the election and what we did during the election. And one of the things that occurred to us was that we spent a lot of time during the election talking about being a public servant and having the heart of a public servant, and what does that mean? And what I realized is I really had not done a great job in my first term of getting out into the community and making myself known to the people in the community who are the most central to the concerns that our public might have. And so what I've decided to do was to go to every city and county commission and introduce myself and make sure that you know me and that you feel comfortable reaching out to me if you have a concern or a problem. As you know, some of you know for sure, and our attorney, I'm sure knows, the principal nature of my job is criminal prosecution. I am the state attorney for the Eighth Judicial Circuit, so I cover Alachua, Union, Baker, Bradford, Levy, and Gilchrist Counties, which is 4,300 square miles, approximately 425,000 constituents. It's a very large area to cover, and we prosecute about 17,000 individual criminal cases per year. And I do that with about 130 employees, and about 45 of whom are attorneys. It takes about two employees for every, to put one attorney in a courtroom. So that's kind of what I am and what I do. And but the question I, or what I wanted to bring forward to you is how can I be more of a public servant other than this, what we do every day, which is to try and keep the community safe by prosecuting criminals that are brought to us, criminal cases that are brought to us by law enforcement? And I thought, well, the way I could do that is to make sure that you know who I am and that you know how to reach me because you all, as commissioners, have your hands in the community. People are reaching out to you with questions and with concerns that sometimes you may not know what to do with. And so you have a city attorney, and so when it's a matter that's related to your job as a city commissioner, you already have a lawyer for whom you can go to. If it's a matter that directly relates to law enforcement, and I am a huge fan of your Chief of Police, Chief Shepherd, we work together all the time. We, I would give him accolades in this sense. He is the only chief that regularly reaches out to us and asks us to come and train with his officers to keep his officers abreast of, we do, every year we do a case law update for him, and then we do another hour of something that we work on that could be domestic violence or it could be making your best cases in the courtroom. You know, so, but I digress a little bit. If you have a law enforcement, direct law enforcement question, you go to Chief, right? So you say, well, how can I help? Well, what I want, what I hope for is this. If you have something that you don't know who to go to, you don't know who in the system it is that you should take this problem to, that's why I'm giving you the card. Is if you have something, one of the things I think I am good at is if I can't solve your problem, I can probably figure out who can. And I'll give you my example that I like to talk about because I'm very happy that we did it. I'm very proud of this example. One of my friends has a friend who is a guardian ad litem. And he had a ward who moved from one foster home to another foster home. And when the ward moved, they didn't know how to, the new foster parents didn't know how to get his medication. He had no medication, he needed medication. They didn't know how to get it. So they called, so through my friend, it come back to me. How do we get this child medication? And I said, I don't know, I have nothing to do with the guardian ad litem program, but I do know the people who work there, and I know the lawyers who work there, and I know some of the staffers because they used to work for me. And so I said, hold on. And we called people, and by the end of the day, we had that kid his medication, right? And that, to me, is how, an example of how I can be the public servant that I have claimed to you to be during the election process and what I'm inviting you to do, to reach out to me if you find yourself in that situation, that I'm here to help in any way that I can and to serve and to be the public servant that I claim to be. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll let you get on with your meeting.
I don't think so.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much for putting me on your agenda. I really appreciate you being here.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate it.
Always good to see you, Rebecca. And under special presentations, number three, we have another very, very nice proclamation recognizing St. Madeline's Catholic Church's Centennial Jubilee. And we have a special individual to read that proclamation as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to do this. This is my faith, my home. My kids were all baptized in that church, all grew up in that church. One is still growing up in that church. And it's been home to me for about 28 years. So we have Deacon Henry Zamuda and his beautiful bride Carol here. And I'd like to read this proclamation to you, and then you can leave. Proclamation, City of High Springs, State of Florida. Whereas in 1925, the faithful of High Springs, Florida, established St. Madeline Catholic Church, laying the foundation for a vibrant community of faith and service. And whereas the parish has faithfully served the spiritual needs of its members for a century, fostering a deep commitment to the teachings of the church and the love of Christ. And whereas the parish has been a beacon of hope, compassion, and charity, reaching out to those in need and embodying the principles of the gospel. And whereas the centennial celebration on May 25th, 2025, marks a momentous occasion to reflect on the past, celebrate the present, and look forward to a future filled with continued faith and service. And whereas the parish community will gather in unity and joy, giving thanks for the blessings received and committing to the mission of spreading the good news for generations to come. Let us come together in prayer and fellowship, honoring the past and embracing the future with hope and dedication. Now therefore, Tristan Grunder, Mayor of the City of High Springs, does hereby proclaim May 25th, 2025, as a day of celebration and Thanksgiving for the 100th anniversary of St. Madeline's Catholic Church and its continued mission to serve the faithful of High Springs and beyond. Happy 100 years, and here's to the next 100.
That's right.
Thank you.
And you know, the original church building from 1925 still exists. It was right here downtown on Second Street, I believe. But in the 1980s, the building was physically moved to our current grounds, a little bit south on 441. It now serves as what we call the Shrine of Our Lady of La Leche. It's a historic site, and all of you are welcome to come and visit that shrine if you're ever, if you're ever on our campus. And I know some, you're all invited. I know some of you will be present with us on Sunday at our 11:30 mass, where we will have three bishops and various other visiting priests and dignitaries, followed by a celebration in our parish hall. And it's going to be a big celebration. So I hope to see all of you there, if at all possible. And thank you for honoring St. Madeline that way. I'm honored to be able to accept on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And now, like our attorney, I'll let you continue with your meeting.
Okay, we have nothing new for, or nothing of unfinished business to talk about. We'll move on to citizen requests and comments for issues not on the agenda. Please state your name for the record and limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Good evening. Commissioners, my name is Mary Diaz. I'm coming from the Sonya River Water Management District up in Live Oak, and I'm here to make an invitation to all city officials and residents of High Springs to a meeting we're having on July 1st, 2025, in Bronson. Before I get on to that, I do want to take this opportunity of outreach to remind you of an upcoming BMAP milestone. And so I'm going to read the DEP statement real quick. Responsible entities must submit a sufficient list of additional projects and management strategies to DEP by January 14th, 2026, to be compliant with the upcoming BMAP milestone or be subject to further department enforcement. So let's get on to the Waukesha. The study area is the Waukesha watershed and encompasses areas of Alachua County, Gilchrist County, and Levy County. High Springs is barely in it, all the way over there to the top. This is the project timeline. Back in July, 2021, we went to city and county officials and asked them which areas to focus the studies, and that's what started this project. And the flood risk review meeting was scheduled for April, 2025, but we had to pause our work during March and April. The CTP work, the cooperating technical partner work with FEMA, and we've pushed it to July 1st, 2025. The, this is some detail of what it went to do, the map. The intent of that July 1st meeting is to go into detail how the maps were created and to answer any public or county or city official questions. So I'll just jump through this. So the, we're updating the flood maps, is what we're doing, of the Waukesha watershed. The areas in red are areas that were updated in 2022, so they're not being updated at this time. Everybody's invited to these, this meeting on July 1st. The, and it's to go over changes. So this is what to expect on the difference between the maps, what they look like, what they're going to look like. This is another example. Blue is the 1% or what was called the 100-year flood zone. Purple is the X-zone with flood zone less than one foot. And gray is the 0.2% or the 500-year flood zone. And the important thing about it is, you know, A is the one where you're going to need flood insurance if you've got a building in it. I've got the results here by county. I can tell you in this, in the city of High Springs, there's no buildings being added to the flood zone, but that doesn't mean that there's no changes in property. So I would encourage you to come to the meeting, participate in the meeting, because even though there's no buildings being added, and you might think, well, if there's no buildings, my insurance is not going to change, why does it matter? You might, you still want to know how that flood zone is changing because maybe you're thinking about building, putting a building somewhere in that property. So again, I would encourage you to look at these changes, look at these maps. Right now, we're at the flood risk review meeting. That stage, you can provide comments without any engineering backup. So if you think it doesn't flood, you can come to this meeting or you can go to this website and provide a comment and say, I've lived here so long, I've been here through hurricanes, it doesn't flood, I don't agree with this. And you can do that with just a comment. When these maps go preliminary, which is after this stage, the only way we can take comments if it's, if it's with engineering backup. So it's really important to take the opportunity to provide comments. I was here for the Santa Fe a couple of years ago, and based on that effort, we got over 1,000 comments, and we went back and we're changing the maps now. So, you know, these meetings are very important. So the district put up this website, srwmdfloodreport.com/virtual. In there, you'll find the PowerPoints that we're going to have at the meeting. We're going to have a recording of the meeting after the meeting. And we have other, like watershed dashboards and all kinds of information about the watershed. And in those presentation slides, you can, you'll find the map. You can click on the link that takes you to a S3 map, and it'll show all the changes. And it'll allow you to actually provide a comment. We put it within the presentation so that you could, so that you would check the slides out because it explains how to put the comments in in case you can't make it to the meeting. At the meeting, you'll have district staff available to meet with you one-on-one, to go over your parcel or whatever parcel of interest, and explain the changes, what it means. And then they can write the comment in for you. So the meeting is in Bronson on July 1st. That's a typo, at 5:00. We'll be there at 6:00 as well. So, but you will be there. We usually, we're there until everybody leaves. So, I mean, the latest I've dated one has been like 7:30, but we won't leave until everybody's gone. And, you know, so it's all the way in Bronson. It's far, but we tried to put a center point on that watershed. So I do want to encourage you to go. I do have some flyers with a QR code with that map if you want them. And I've got cards, I can go over the maps with, oh, here, sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming.
David Lynch, L.I.N.C.H. Let's talk about our concrete streets. I told you once before that I was a long-distance truck driver. I drove in all 48 states and Ontario and Quebec. I've been in all the big cities and hundreds of small towns. When I wasn't driving, I would go on long walks. I haven't seen any concrete streets anywhere in the United States or Canada like the ones we have here. So these streets are beautiful, they are historic, and they're part of our heritage in High Springs. These are the streets that I walked on as a child. So I urge the commissioners not to pave over our beautiful concrete streets. Moving on to another subject. Children operating electric scooters at high rates of speed. The commissioners are responsible for the safety, health, and well-being of every person that lives in High Springs. I urge the commissioners to think about this. Is this a safe practice for small children to be driving electric scooters at high rates of speed? That's why we have driver's license. You have to be 14 years of age to get your restricted license and 16 to get your operators. I ask the commissioners to think about this. The third topic is, I would like to remind the commissioners that alcoholic beverages kill 7,000 people each day. But yet, High Springs Brewing is using the High Springs name to promote that product that kills 7,000 people each day.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Any other citizen comments? Okay, commissioners, do you have any responses? I would like to see if we could get a representative from High Springs to the, that meeting in Bronson on July 1st. I'll get with Jeremy, though. But I would like us to be in attendance or have somebody there to speak for us. Oh, you will? Fantastic.
For local, 2:00 PM for local community officials, so I'll be there too.
Perfect.
Yeah.
We'll move on to new business. New business item one, discuss, consider, and act on appointing/reappointing members to the mayor's youth council.
Mayor, we have two youth council members who will be graduating at the end of this month, and as such, we need to appoint two new ones. We currently have an alternate by the name of Janelle Avila, who has been serving as an alternate member of the youth council for several weeks now. She has hit the ground running and attended every meeting. We also have someone who may now be familiar, Zach Nichol. He has also applied to fill one of our full positions.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, do we have to vote on each of them individually? Or can we vote on both of them together?
Individually.
Individually, okay.
I will tell you that I've had the pleasure of being around Janelle when we did our career fair at Santa Fe. She was awesome. She's been at everything. She's had, she's been able to provide a lot of insight on different things and a lot of great ideas, so. And then I was looking over, and I mean, can't give the kid a proclamation and not let him be on the mayor's council. There's a dagum Eagle Scout, I mean, really? So, I mean, I think we, I feel very lucky that we have two extremely qualified people, and I'm glad that Janelle is willing to, after having sat, come back and want to step up into a bigger role. So that's awesome. I'm very excited. This, this group of people is just, these young people are just amazing. We've got a valedictorian on there right now. I mean, we've got some of the best and brightest in Alachua County that happen to be from our city, and it's very well represented. I think I would put ours up against anybody else's, but I don't think they have one, at least not one as good as us.
Newberry would like to be like us. They're asking.
That's cute.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
Jamie, we're still going to be short one individual, correct?
Yes, sir. We still have one full position remaining as well as one alternate position remaining after the appointment of these two.
Okay.
So this gives us four, which is a quorum?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So we're still looking for somebody. So if anybody's out there listening, we'll take your application and probably take you right on. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I'm going to be proudly to accept Zach Nichol.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to add Zach Nichol to the mayor's youth council. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Welcome, Zach. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would be honored to make a motion that we accept the very lovely Janelle Avila to be a full member of the mayor's youth council.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
Congratulations.
You're in there now.
And Zach's brother, Sam, is currently serving as the vice chair of the youth council. And he's very quiet, but he's always present. He's always ready to help, no matter what. And as Mr. Mayor mentioned, our outgoing past, what's the one I'm looking for? Chair of the youth council, Camden Trees, is graduating next week as valedictorian of Santa Fe High School. So, and Lila Sealy, who is also graduating, is quite possibly one of the loveliest creatures I've ever met. She is just the sweetest person, and she was an amazing gift to this council, so.
We're not going to say where Camden's going to school at. We'll keep that.
Negative, sir. We don't need to go there.
Yeah, well, he probably couldn't get into like a better one.
He got into UF, UF just wouldn't give him the money that you in Miami threw him some money, so.
So he got into the best, he just, you know, kids make bad decisions, you know? They got to learn from them, though. gotta learn from them, though. He's gonna love Miami, though, it's a really safe place. A lot like High Springs.
Oh, Camden.
All right, we're gonna move on to new business item number two, discuss, consider, and act on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan.
Good evening, commissioners, mayor, chief, city attorney.
It is my great pleasure to bring up our consultants, Ms. Kristin and Amy, to give a brief presentation on our Parks and Rec Master Plan. So if you guys would come up. Oh, she's right behind me. Okay.
Thanks, Jennifer. I wanna tell you all, I feel into my bones, I went to Florida for undergraduate and graduate school, and I currently have a junior in high school who wants to go to FSU. So I know, it's, I'm like, did I raise you wrong? What's going on here? So I feel that. Thank you all for having us tonight. The lady who gave the presentation from the Swanee River Water Management District made me feel good that they started their project before we started this project, so. And they're still going, and we're wrapping up, so thank you all for having us tonight. We're really excited. We've been fortunate to have been working with the city of High Springs since late 2022 on this project, so it's been a few years, there's been some changes in administration, and really have enjoyed working here, have enjoyed to get to know your community. My name's Kristin Kayborn, I'm the director of Parks and Open Spaces at GAI Consultants, so I have the very fortunate job of getting to work with all of our public sector clients on their public parks and recreation projects. So getting to work in High Springs really has been a special, a special time for us. So tonight, right before this, we had a meeting from 5:00 to 6:00 o'clock, where we spent an hour with a few of your citizens, who were really active in the overall planning process, especially in our public input, back in 2023. So we gave them a longer version of the plan that I'm gonna be covering with you all tonight. At the end, we are gonna be asking you to adopt the plan. The reason why we look to have the plan adopted is when you are applying for grants, like the Florida Development Assistance Program, FERDAP, or the Land and Water Conservation Fund and other grants, you get points for having an adopted master plan that sets a vision for the future. So I'm here as long as you need me. The presentation is short, it covers three years of work, but I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you have, so hopefully, at the end, you're able to adopt the plan. So I'm gonna talk, give you an overview of the overall project, how we got to where we are tonight, take you through the level of service, there's some technical aspects to that that relate back to the recreation open space element of your comprehensive plan that we've been working with Jennifer and Christie to work through how that looks and ultimately reflects into the comp plan, the guiding principles that form the framework for all of the recommendations, and then ultimately, the recommendations for the project. So our assignment, when we began the project, was really to create a blueprint for the next 10 years of parks and recreation in High Springs. You all are growing, especially to the southern parts of the city. So when we started the project, the idea was, how do we get a consolidated vision that prioritizes what we have existing, but also has a conscientious effort moving into the future, and how you're gonna grow, and how you're gonna provide public services to the new residents of High Springs? How are we gonna sustain the system? We really thought about financial sustainability. A lot of people automatically think of environmental sustainability when we say sustainability, very important, but also equally important is the financial sustainability of a plan. Really balancing what you have, and how you can improve what you have with how you're gonna grow in the future, was an eye that we kept forward in the plan, and something that we heard over and over again through the public input process that took place back in 2023. And then the other part of the plan was looking at how people are getting to not only your parks, but other points of interest in the city or adjacent to the city limits. For instance, Post Springs came up a lot. It's an Alachua County park, it's very much beloved by your residents here in High Springs, so one thing we heard over and over again, even though High Springs is an Alachua County park, is that your residents wanted some trail connections to get there. So just a little preview of some of what we heard. So we start the process with understanding, this is where we spend a lot of time in the city, I have been to all of your parks, I've spent time in all of your parks, spent time in your parks during the busy times, and after school, on the weekends, see how people are using them when they are at their busiest. We've inventoried all of your parks, you now have a complete database of all of your infrastructure in GIS, so you know, the predictions are a big hurricane season this year, hopefully it won't happen, but in the event that you have any damage to any of your parks, you have a full database of all of your infrastructure, you can prove your infrastructure and use that for, if you're seeking reimbursement from FEMA, for instance. We also, part of the understanding process is the public input. We had a lot of public input meetings, both open public workshops, where we were in the parks on the weekends and in the evenings, talking to people, as well as focus groups, where we invited people to come talk to us in a little bit of a smaller setting that were facilitated conversations. Once we got through that phase of it, we moved to the visioning phase, where we took everything we saw in your parks, and everything we heard from the public, and started to create a vision, again, that is looking towards an eye for financial sustainability moving into the future. And then we created the final master plan that really results in your recommendations and the capital improvement plan that I'll go over briefly this evening. I do wanna mention that Jennifer from Parks and Recreation and I have been talking, and the full plan, if there's anybody listening at home or in the audience, is gonna be posted on the city website after we get through tonight, so it's some light reading for anybody who might be interested from the public to read the overall plan. The report is actually very interesting, if you're a parks planner, but there are a lot of really good, lot of good aspects to it that will matter for the people who live in High Springs, because we are really and truly writing this plan for people who live here and work here, and are spending time in High Springs on a daily basis. So when you look at the park system, you've got nine parks, we are, the ninth park that we're calling is your farmer's market. It's not necessarily a former park, formal park, but it is a nice piece of open green space with a pavilion. It's used for special events in the heart of High Springs, so we included it in the park system, and we look at connectivity related to that as well. But the first thing that jumps out when you look at this map is the city limits are depicted by the solid kind of bluish gray, the way that shows on the screen, and your existing parks are the aqua-colored numbers, and you can see they're heavily concentrated in the existing part of the city where your grid is, and right in the downtown area. You have a lot of area in the city that has been annexed into the city and has begun to develop residential areas that don't have any parks in any proximity, so we'll talk about that in a little while, and how we're gonna address that. Public meetings, again, took place in January, February of 2023. It was a lovely time of year to do public input, because we were outside, we were under pavilions and parks, we actually had a tent set up at the frozen foot race, so we were catching people as they were coming in from their race at one of the public meetings, so we had a great opportunity to meet people where they were, instead of having to come to a public workshop that was set up for them to come and hear me talk at them for an hour and a half. We had our team spread out maps of the city on tables, some people stayed for 10 minutes, we had some people park and stay the entire hour and a half that we were there. So it was a great way to get feedback, it was a great way to engage residents who are loving the parks that are right there in their neighborhood, they were calling their friends and calling their neighbors and having them come talk to us, so we have found over the years that that is a much more effective way to get people to talk to us, because it can be a little bit overwhelming to talk to a consultant in a suit that's standing at the front of a room giving a presentation, as entertaining as I think I am. It's much better to do it in that more one-on-one, meet people where they're at. So all of the pieces of information that we heard, we distilled down into guiding principles, and those guiding principles set the buckets, if you will, the overall themes that we write the recommendations from. So we heard everything from, we want more dog parks, to we want more trails, we want better communication, we want more recreation programs. We take all of those pieces of information that we heard, and we distill it down to these three principles. We have parks and trails, how are we gonna grow your existing park system to keep up with growth that makes sense, again, tying back to the financial sustainability aspect, improving what you have, your parks, many of them have been well-loved over the years. And I do wanna mention at this point, because we were inventorying in 2022, and there's been some change in leadership, since Jennifer has gotten here, y'all have such an amazing steward for your parks, really and truly. She embraced us as soon as, I gave her a couple weeks after she started, and then I was like, hey, Jennifer, let's talk. And ever since then, she has been all over this, we have been working hand-in-hand, she has begun to implement some of these recommendations. So recommendations that you're gonna see in the report, based on inventory and public input from 2022, 2023, are already done or are in process, which is great, and we love that, it's a wonderful success story, and a lot of those things fall under Parks, the Parks and Trails guiding principle. We also heard a lot about recreation, because High Springs is a largely residential community, it's not surprising to us as park planners that people wanna have recreation programs right here where they live. They want after-school programs, summer camp programs, and you're starting to get more of that. But in order to have recreation programs, you have to have bodies. So having the people to begin to implement recreation programs is something to consider over time, Jennifer's not gonna be able to do at all. So if you wanna grow your recreation programming, it takes people with management experience to oversee the leagues, to make sure that your coaches are getting their fingerprints and their background screening and all of that type of administration thing, to be able to grow your recreation programming, that's gonna be something, the human resource is something that's gonna be really important to think about. And then protecting natural resources and the environment whenever you have the opportunity to do that. Certainly, the canoe outpost, having that become one of the parks in the city, protecting that access to the river, protecting that land, it was one great step towards protecting your nature and environment here in High Springs. So level of service is where we start to get really technical. This map is one that, for me, is really fun to study, I'm just gonna give you all a quick orientation to it. So the city parks are in kind of the lime-green color, the more greenish-gray parks are the other parks. You're very, very blessed to have a lot of other parks, you've got Olino, you've got, you're close to the hot, like we talked about, Post Springs, you've got even private Camp Calaquah, so you've got a lot of other parks that are surrounding you here in High Springs. The city limits are harder to see in here, but the blue area and the yellow area are all your city limits. So where we are looking at the difference there, the two shades of blue are the access to your existing parks. This is, all ties back to the comp plan, I'm not gonna get into a lot of detail, but just so y'all can understand the map, we heard through the public input process that people wanna be able to walk to parks that are close to their home, so when they get done with school, they get done with work, they wanna be able to walk to a park at the end of the day. That's about a half a mile, quarter mile service area. So what we did is, we looked at a half a mile from each one of your existing parks in High Springs, and that's the gator blue color. When we spread out a little bit further, when we're looking at a community park, that's a three-mile service area, that's the darker blue color, that is parks if people have to hop in a car to get to. So your existing parks are covering your blue areas of the city. The yellow, both the light area, light yellow area and the dark yellow area are residential, either current darker yellow or residential land use, so future potential residential that has zero access to a park within either a half-mile walking distance or a three-mile drive. So what you see, we affectionately call them park deserts, what you see are, not surprising probably to you, are the circles that are B, C, and D. Those circles represent a three-mile radius, so about a three-mile hop in your car, service area for parks. So in your southern part of your city, these are the areas where you would target for land acquisition in the long run. Land is never gonna be cheaper than it is today. We don't identify specific parcels, but if you have a developer who were to come to you and say, hey, city of High Springs, I've got five acres, are you interested in it? Yes, we are interested in it, you know, depending on what strings are attached. And then you can check the boxes, starting to fill some of these areas of High Springs residents who don't have any access to public parks. The reason why we look at the bigger three-mile radius in this southern part of the city is we assume that these developers are putting in small homeowners association parks, small HOA-type parks, that are gonna serve the, we wanna walk to a playground at the end of the day. Tying back to the financial sustainability aspect, we don't, we're not gonna stand up here and tell you, fill that entire park desert with smaller neighborhood parks, because it is much more effective for Jennifer and her team to maintain larger acre parcels and fewer than a bunch of little ones scattered throughout the city. The only exception to that is A, which is north, north of 441 in the city, that is a half a mile service area, that is an area of the city where you have some existing residents and some future land use of recreation, excuse me, of residential land use, where you don't have a park right now. So if anything becomes available in that half-mile area as you get further north in the city, we would encourage you to look at that for a neighborhood park. Any questions on that map? I know there's a lot of information in there. Great. So looking at pedestrian connectivity, we not only looked at your parks, but we also looked at city hall, areas that people are interested in walking to and can easily walk to, we looked at the community school. The peach color is looking at about a half-mile or a 10-minute walk, so you can see the areas that people can easily walk to these, what we call points of interest in the city. Again, yellow is showing your residential, either current land use or future land use, where they can't really walk anywhere within a half a mile, so this is just a point of information, improving pedestrian connectivity is one of the priorities that falls out of the master plan. So park-type equity standards, this is a big fancy word for basically saying, when you have a resident who lives in High Springs, no matter what park they go to, they can expect the same type of quality, the same type of infrastructure, doesn't mean that all of your parks are a cookie cutter of each other, and certainly not all of them are gonna be a perfect square. But we heard a lot from public input, the elements that are listed there are what are the priority for your residents. So what we have done is translated this in a neighborhood park, neighborhood park in High Springs, again, ties back to the comprehensive plan, is anything between two and five acres. The target for a future neighborhood park is at least two acres, and that goes back to, it's better to have a little bit larger acreage and less of them than having a bunch of little spots all over the city. So what we have done in the recommendations is using the list of elements that were prioritized as part of the public input process, we've gone through all of your existing parks and made recommendations of how you can elevate the level of service to your existing parks. So if you have an area that doesn't have a playground or a play area, for example, there would be a recommendation to add a play area there. Part of that is increasing the amount of people who can use it, so having parks that have something from the very young to your most seasoned residents, something for all of them to do in the same site. It encourages multi-generational activity at the parks, brings more people there, has them stay longer. So we have recommendations for adding those six things to each of your existing parks, or if you're bringing in a new neighborhood park in that A area of the city where we showed doesn't have a current neighborhood park, these are the elements that you would look at. One of the things that I wanna mention that's really important, and the reason why we talk about a minimum of two acres going forward, is open space. We have a tendency to put something to do in every patch of green space in a park, and we have found that over the years, the way the public uses the park, use parks in general, and this runs the gamut no matter where you are, is the open space, the unprogrammed open space, they can kick a ball, they can lay out in the sun, they can read a book, they can, you know, play a pickup game of catch, but having open green space is really important. And to have open green space, you need to have a park that's not packed with amenities, so we look at a little bit of a larger acreage associated with that. This is never meant to be so prescriptive, that again, not every park is gonna be a perfect square shape, that we're saying, these are exactly what you have. A play area might be a playground, it might also be adult exercise, if it's an area as you're bringing on Park A, if you have the residents come out to a public meeting and say, we really wanna have adult exercise equipment, that's fine, you fulfilled play area, check. Same thing with sports court. Sports court could be basketball, could be pickleball, could be tennis, it could be anything that is the public who lives around there is interested in, because again, this is gonna be the park they're gonna be walking to at the end of the day. So same thing with community park, these are your larger parks, so the B, C, and D park, as those were to come on, again, those are longer-term recommendations, but looking at, again, five acres, so you have a little bit more space, the community park adds a couple of things beyond what your neighborhood park is, you see that we've got more off-street parking, so more form- You see that we've got more off street parking, so more formal parking. In a neighborhood park, we're looking at 88 spaces only. The idea is people are walking there, you might have one or two additional spaces. A larger multipurpose sports field, again, we don't care if it's soccer, we're showing it as a rectangle here. It could be soccer, football, lacrosse, baseball, softball, whatever the neighborhood wants. It could just be an informal backstop where people can play a pickup game. And then adding in the distinct user experience, you all have a brand new community garden, but some of the distinct user experiences that we heard, part of the public input process was a dog park. So thinking about a dog park, these are drive to parks, they have a three mile service area. So what is unique and distinct about that park that makes it worth somebody hopping in their car and driving to, that is just a little bit more unique? So the recommendations, we have short, mid, and long term. So just a quick summary of your short term recommendations. This is building on the CIP spreadsheet that we did. So Jennifer has a large living, breathing Excel spreadsheet. Each of the projects and each of the parks has a tab at the bottom, and it categorizes it to short, mid, and long term, and it has breakdowns of the cost of each of the projects, and they can be shifted between fiscal years, however, however she wants to use it. But looking at short term, Catherine Taylor Park, which you all have already begun to do, I haven't gotten to go in the new building yet, but the renovated building, but I'm really looking forward to seeing that. The Santa Fe Canoe Outpost, all of these specific recommendations are in the report. Y'all can read about them. If anybody's listening to me at home or in the audience, should be able to read what all of these mean. Addressing the deficiencies, so when we talk about deficiencies, this isn't a knock against, against the park. It's just when we talk about the park equity and having a basic level of service across all of your parks in High Springs, this is bringing these parks up, your Civic Center Park, the Sports Complex, Memorial Park, and Walter Howard, to a basic level of service. So there is, there's recommendations specifically that breaks down that. Master planning, re-envisioning for James Paul Park, this would be like a site-specific master plan process where you meet with the neighbors, talk with them about what they want, and how that park will look to move into the future. And then other projects are not specifically tied to an existing park site. Park lighting is a really big one in Florida. I, we talked about this with the citizens earlier. The best time of year to be in your parks are the like November to March, April at 5:30 and 6 o'clock at night when it's pitch black. So if people want to be able to get out to the parks after school and after work, you've got to light them. We're not talking about lighting parks until 11 o'clock at night. We're talking about lighting parks until eight or nine o'clock at night, lights go off, work them with the police department to, if people aren't gone when the lights go off, you know, gently encourage them to leave and go home and go to bed, or whatever they need to do. But being able to enjoy our best weather here and be, when it's dark out. Looking at the feasibility of the connection and working with Alachua County to connect your city up to High Spring, or to Post Springs, excuse me, and then that new neighborhood park in the A area of your existing residential area. So this is your short term, zero to two years. Backup for all of this is in the document. When we move to midterm, we talk to to five years. This is important because these are the projects that we see that hopefully are feasible with the certex that y'all got and everything moving forward that you can accomplish in the next five years. Long term, which I'll talk, talk about next, go from six plus years. And we always recommend an update, a partial update to your master plan at year five. And the reason for that is you would test what you've accomplished. It gives you a great opportunity to celebrate your accomplishments, what you've been able to do as part of these recommendations, and also test the long term recommendations to see if they're still relevant to your community. Talk about the things that maybe you haven't gotten to yet, are those still priorities? So at the end of five years, we talk about, let's look at this again. It's not a full scale new report like what we're doing now, but let's talk to the public one more time. Let's do the capital improvement plan one more time just to see what's, see what's relevant still moving forward. So this brings in enhancing existing parks that, and aspects of existing parks that might not be as crucial to get to first. That brings in the Civic Center Park and the Sports Complex. Implementing the master plan for James Paul Park that you did in the short term, as well as on the Santa Fe Canoe Outpost, and then looking at the other projects, some more park lighting, beginning to implement the master plan that was done in short term for the new, if y'all are able to find the land for a new neighborhood park A, and then begin master planning the new community parks, B, C, and D. So again, you can see how we're trying to break up building with planning and not having too much of any one thing in any planning horizon. And then finally, long term, continuing to implement the park lighting projects and beginning to actually implement or build your new community parks, B, C, and D. So we're splitting that, those up. We've planned for them, we've acquired the land, and in five plus years, you look at actually building them and implementing them as funds become available. And that is a typo. That should say five to 10 years, I apologize. So again, we're looking for the adoption of the master plan, acknowledging that it's a long, that it's a vision. It does, by adopting it, it doesn't mean your city attorney can probably tell you, it doesn't mean you're committing to spend the money that's laid out in it. It's just creating a vision and a strategy that may, that is flexible, but provides guidance moving forward. And I'm done.
Thank you so much. That was awesome. Do we have any questions? Comments? Concerns?
What is, I'm a proponent of canoe outpost. If we're going to hold on to it, I want to see a boat ramp there for use of local people that have grown up fishing on this river. Kayaking has become much bigger than what it used to be. So where, do we have enough room for a boat ramp to be put in that location? Depending on the property and, you know, the rules and regulations with Swanee River Water Management, all that sort of stuff?
I think, I believe that you have enough room out there. That site needs some re-envisioning, and I think your biggest challenge for that is just going to be the, is, is going to be the permitting process and the access to the river and going through, because of going through the state and going through FDEP.
Yeah. So y'all would help design and configure that for boat ramp usage? How, where would y'all come in at on that?
Well, we could, but any, any civil engineer could do that for you. I mean, we love our relationship with High Springs, but, and would love to continue to work with you all, but you all have other talented civil engineers on board, too. We've done some really challenging boat ramps over the years and had some really weird permitting requirements. But I'm not an engineer, I'm a planner. So I've just been, I've just been around it enough to know what the challenges are, but certainly, yes, that would be a, something that a civil engineer could take on for you.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? I went to the early workshops and community gatherings at the parks, and I just want to say that having those maps laid out and talking to people saying, show me where you work, live, and play, was very effective. That, that interaction was super effective, because I'm not a planner, you know, but that really brought me into what the goals and objectives were. So I want to commend you for those interactions. They were, I think they were very fruitful.
Thanks. It's more fun for us, too, for sure. We get to know y'all better.
It, it accomplished the goal really constructively, in my opinion.
Good, thank you. Love to hear that.
In the B, C, and D desert area, in that part of town, I think one of the reasons why that's somewhat desert-like is, is the, the properties in that area generally are larger. And you've got neighborhoods where, you know, the community, the kids play in each other's backyards. So how does that factor into the evolution of this, you know, in terms of, you know, there is some kind of organic play area there already?
Yeah, and that's a really, a really great question. And kind of what you're saying actually reinforces the strategy that we put together for this. So we heard through the public input process that people want to be able to walk to parks. But, and, and again, this ties back to your comprehensive plan and how we actually implement this. So we have the neighborhood park level of service, which is the half mile, 10 minute walk-ish in the denser parts of the city. So where you are, don't have, that is A. So that's why you see A is only a half mile service area. Instead of doing that neighborhood park level of service in your B, C, and D area, because then we would be, could you imagine us draw, and we test, we tested that, we dropped a bunch of half mile service areas all over your unserved area of the city, and it became ridiculous. So you needed like eight new parks. And that's not feasible and doesn't make any sense. So knowing that these are larger acre parcels, you know, you might not have four or five units per acre, you might have one, you know, people may live on one acre, and kids are playing in backyards with their friends and running down the streets and doing whatever they're doing. That is why we have the larger, but fewer parks in this area with the idea that people, it's a three mile service area. So each circle represents three miles. People are, for the public parks, likely hopping in their car and driving to them, unless they happen to be fortunate enough to live right near an area where you just bought some land for implementing your parks. And I would hope that your developers, developers will work with you. So getting into impact fees and trades and land swaps and negotiations and all that is, you know, very specific. But you all have a mission and you have a goal, hey, we need to have some city controlled parks, HOA type parks, if your developers are building HOA parks, they're not public parks.
Right.
They're HOA controlled. Your mission is to provide public parks to the people of High Springs, no matter where you live. So we want people to feel welcome. We want high, city of High Springs parks, signs there, everybody knows they can come regardless if they live there. So, but they're probably driving. And that's why you see the larger service areas. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
I could talk forever.
It does. It's just, the reality of that area is there's a lot of play going on privately, but I understand what you're saying in terms of a public park. And the report that's going to be going on the website, are the hyperlinks live in there that'll take you to GIS?
No. You don't want to do that because it's, the GIS isn't very, isn't, we've been working with Jennifer and the city staff on that, but it's, it's not consumable for the general public, because you have to have licenses and stuff like that. You have, on your website, what would you want them to be able to see?
I'm, I'm just curious how interactive that is. It's, it's, is it just a PDF?
The report's a PDF.
Okay.
Yeah, the report, the GIS data is, the city now has all of our shape files, and they could go in and take, because we photo document everything and we encourage, we've spent time with Christie, and we've been working with the staff to teach them how to use the GIS database that we created. So if you replace a playground, they could take out our picture and put in the new picture and document that. So it's a complete inventory of your assets and your infrastructure, but it's not a public facing, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't even be functional really for the public. What y'all have on the city website for the parks is, is great.
The staff has access to the interactive model.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes.
That's important.
Yes.
That's really good.
Yes.
I think that's all I've got. How, this has been a long process. And I know that it, you know, staff changes and stuff made it challenging. Is that typical of this kind of a, a plan? Because this is not my realm of expertise at all.
It, it depends. I mean, I've been working on the city of Jacksonville's master plan for longer.
Well, they a little bit bigger than we are.
They're a little bit bigger than you are. But the city of Northport, we're working on their plan, and we've got to do the entire thing in six months because they had some funding for it. So it's all, I mean, it's across the board. It's, we stopped on this plan for a long time.
And why, why is that?
Because there was no staff to lead it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I know there was, there was obviously some changes.
With city manager turnover and, and all of that, it, it doesn't make sense for us to move forward without the staff partnership, because then we're just dictating to you, and we don't want to do that. We really want, I mean, since Jennifer came on board, like I said, I think I gave her like a week, maybe two. And then I was like, you know, Jennifer, let's talk, let's, you know, we caught her up, she's giggling in the back. We caught her up, we, you know, I spent time chatting with her about everything we did, gave her some breathing room to digest what we had already written, because we had already written quite a bit by the time the previous city manager left and the previous Parks and Rec Director left. And so, you know, we just, we want this to be useful and functional, too. So instead of plowing ahead in our best interest, we'd rather wait till it's in your best interest.
Well, you've got the Energizer Bunny working with you now, so you're good.
Little did you know, she didn't need a week. She probably had ideas that day. Yeah, she is amazing. Any other questions? Do we have any citizen comment? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we adopt the recommendations of the Parks and Rec Master Plan, and with my thanks to the Parks and Rec Board as well. I know they were very, very involved, and they are a passionate, passionate group of volunteers, all volunteers.
Yes. I will second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. Any citizen comment now that we have a motion on the floor? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. It's really been our pleasure.
I'm really sorry about the FSU thing.
Yeah.
I have, I have a junior, too, so.
She might change her mind.
All right, moving on to new business item three, discuss, consider, and act on special magistrate contract, and this is a resolution.
Bye, B. Would you like me to read title only, unless otherwise directed? Considerations Resolution Number 2025E, Resolution of the City of High Springs, Florida, approving that certain agreement between the city and the Gilchrist Law Firm, PA, for special magistrate services, making certain findings of fact in support of the city approving said agreement, recognizing the authority of the mayor to execute and bind the city to set agreement, directing the mayor to execute and bind the city to set agreement. Repealing all prior resolutions in conflict and providing an effective date.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I'll take it away. We all saw the contract. We directed Danielle at the last meeting to go ahead and, and, well, she actually asked that she could go ahead and work on that contract and bring us back something that we had all agreed on. And that is exactly what we have in front of us today. So this is kind of our, I guess, our second time speaking about this. And I again want to reiterate that it means a lot that people show up, and thank you for being here. We look forward to it. And I heard, I spoke with Danielle today, and she did nothing but rave about how responsive and open and the, the back and forth dialogue. And so she, she has nothing but high praises for y'all, and she's excited for this process to get started. So I know that our attorney's office is extremely happy with this. Do we have any comments or questions from any commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, and this is maybe something that would involve Chief Shepherd. Executing this contract will now allow us to move forward to get some resolution for, for citizens who are trying to contest tickets that have been issued by the red light camera. Is that correct?
That is correct. In clarification, that's for the civil process, which I look, I looked today, we only have about seven or to nine cases that are waiting for that.
Okay.
But the cases on the clerk of the court, if they had a uniform traffic citations, those are being heard, those have been heard in the courts by, by county judge.
Okay.
Not a ton, thank God.
I'd also like to touch on, I know we had a concerned citizen that sent us an email about that, and I addressed that with Chief Shepherd. And just in case people are watching or listening, he is available to discuss that personally. He's reached out and said he will, take him at his word. So if people are having issues, please reach out to Chief Shepherd, he will not do you wrong. He will try to address the problem. But now if you're speeding at 55 and it's 35, I'm sorry, I don't know how he's going to address that. But anyway, that's where we're at.
Probably very professionally polite.
Give you $100, and I don't have it.
I have no doubt he'll be very professional, polite, and show you exactly where to pay.
Mr. Mayor, I have another question about the funding for the magistrate. We had one before, and we haven't for a while. Where does that come from?
It's funded in our general fund with planning and codes.
Okay. And we've, we're ready for that?
Yes.
We've prepared for that?
Yes.
Okay.
To follow that up with the, with the red speed, with the revenue that we didn't kind of know, we didn't know where it was going to be, now we kind of know, will that, could that cover in the future? Could that, I know there's very specific stipulations as to...
So I, I've had other police departments talk to me and discuss things. And so what I've learned is that there is the possibility of policing things in the ordinance that we can look in the future, that like a court fee or a cost that will help in that assistance with that. So I do plan on bringing that one day back, but then that would obviously get with the attorneys and maybe having another added ordinance.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, the only other comment I had is I wanted to thank the representative Mr. Mayor, the only other comment I had is I wanted to thank the representative from the Gilchrist Law Firm for being willing to sign this contract before we got here and discussed it, so that for the process being as expeditious as possible, you didn't have to do that. So, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the special magistrate contract as is.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have any public comment? And it is a resolution, and by those, we do those with roll calls. I'm going to pick this thing up before November, I'm telling you, I'm going to get it.
Mayor Grunder?
Yes.
Commissioner Bloodsworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Howell?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
All right, and we will move on to the city attorney reporting update. Mama's the word, I like it. Thanks for coming and hanging out with us tonight. City manager reporting update, chief?
Jeremy, I want to let everybody know that we're currently accepting applications for a plan board. Anyone interested can apply on the city website, and a member will be chosen at the next commission meeting on June 12. Also, a reminder that the joint county-city meeting will be held on Thursday, June 5, at 6:30 PM, and that will be held at the Civic Center, because we do expect a larger crowd. That's it.
Perfect. We'll move on to commissioner comments and concerns, starting with Commissioner Howell.
I just want to be honest, I'm super excited about this Parks and Recs thing. I really am. I think it's just so much potential for this city. I look forward to seeing it.
Yes, I would like to address Mr. Lynch's issue with the concrete streets. I do believe we don't have any road projects coming on board. I know Jeremy's not here, but is that correct? We don't have any projects? Is it concerning a concrete street? Is that the one over there by Dr. Dennis's office? Are we addressing that one, or what are we talking about? I know the past ones and maybe what Mr. Lynch is addressing are the ones that was already pre-approved from last year or even the year before, and I'm not sure that some things have been addressed properly with all those before you as well.
Jason, will you come up? Will you come up to the mic, please? I just want to make sure we get it on the, so Kevin, Kevin, you saw that, I did that?
The one problem with the concrete streets is they're very narrow, and there's not anybody that really can duplicate that, and we have to widen it. I mean, we can really get only one car down at a time, so you've got to...
Yeah, I know that's been addressed, the width of a road prior, down, especially down near the park.
Correct.
That's a major issue that got overlooked or bypassed, whatever you want to put it as. So I know we need to make sure that is taken care of, and I understand, there's some things we can't control, we have to make room for all that.
Yep.
So, I appreciate that, thank you.
Commissioner Bloodsworth, I just wanted to give a shout-out to you and your beautiful bride. You know, we've got Eagle Scouts here, and most of your scouts have eagled. 4% across the nation, but probably closer to 85 or 90% from here in High Springs, and that's...
That's amazing.
That's because of yours and Kathy's dedication to those boys, you know, my own boy being one of them. So I appreciate all of the effort you guys have put in, and I want to wish your wife a happy retirement, because Coach Blood, Coach Blood is retiring, the end of an era. And I wanted to give a special shout-out, Lanier is here. He made some very special trash receptacles for Pioneer Days, and they were a game changer in terms of trash. It made it so much easier, and they were sturdy, and it was fabulous. So thank you, Lanier. And little Energizer Bunny back there, thank you for helping with trash pickup. You never stop.
You're the one that...
So, no, you, you got trash juice all over you, and you didn't mind, you kept on going. So thank you for your help, I appreciate it. That's all I've got, sir.
You're being very humble with the fact on Pioneer Days, I saw you cleaning bathrooms at businesses and picking up trash, and you guys are awesome, and it's, you know, it really does prove that the town comes together, and we've got a very good city with that. Vice Mayor Miller is not here, so we don't have a citizen or a employee of the week, but that's not true, because I heard before the meeting, so I'm going to take over for him, I'm not going to do it as much justice, I swear, but I'm going to try. Grace stepped up today while we had nobody at the front, because our whole front staff with the tags and titles is sick, and they're at home. And so when they left, she volunteered to take all day, no lunch, step right up into it and go right to work, and when I got here, everybody from finance was in the front, working. And I just want to say that that is the epitome of what High Springs is, and that's why we have the best staff in Alachua County. So Grace would be the shout-out today. We're just a very lucky city. And I'll tell you, the parks being excited, and I've said this at the last couple meetings, I'm going to keep saying it, I enjoy riding around on my golf cart every Sunday and watching kids play again and seeing all of our parks being used all weekend long. That was not like that two, three years ago, and it is like that now.
It's a little hot.
It is hot. I am a big boy, believe me, it is hot, but I, you know, I struggle on the golf cart, riding around with the wind in my face, blowing my hair around, but, no, it's just, I'll tell you, I can't get enough of it, and I saw the parks plan come up, and it's just, we're just, I just feel like we're rolling. I really do. So thank all of you, thanks to all the employees and all the citizens who are having faith in us, and I just feel like we're moving in the right direction, and we've got Eagle Scouts, and it's a good damn...